Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order, the Richmond City Special School Board Meeting, Monday, August 31st, 2020, 6:00 PM. Before we have our roll call, Mrs. Ornes, our chair is under the doctor's care this afternoon, and I'm sure she'll be back in time for the next meeting, so let's keep her in mind as we move forward this evening. Thank you so much. All right, Mrs. Wilson, we're ready for the roll call.
Okay. Before I do your roll call, I need to read your electronic meeting statement. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom. The link, excuse me, to access the Zoom meeting can be found in the meeting notice. Once logged in, click Interpretation and select Spanish to listen to the interpretation. All meeting participants are encouraged to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. This meeting is held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020-093 and the school board's resolution that was approved on April 20th, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated that the meeting was a virtual meeting and would be livestreamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there, and the link was provided. It also stated that the public would not, I'm sorry, the school board would not receive comment in person. However, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rvaschools.net, and the comments would be shared and posted to Board Docs. The agenda for the meeting was also posted to the RPS Board Doc site, and the link was provided. Once roll call is taken, it will be determined how many board members are participating. You ready for your roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Ms. Cosby? Mr. Young?
Present.
Dr. Sapini? Mrs. Door? Mrs. Door? Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
And Ms. Burke?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum, and you have six of your board members participating at roll call.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson. At this time, moving forward, 1.02, adoption of the agenda. Motion, please.
So moved.
Back it.
It has been moved improperly second that we accept the agenda as listed.
Madam Chair, we have to have a roll call vote to adopt your agenda.
That's right. Thank you.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Your muse?
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Thank you. Your agenda has been adopted as presented.
All right. Thank you so very much. Moving forward for public information, 2.01. We have 16 letters. What's your pleasure in terms of time? One minute, two minutes, three minutes? What's your pleasure? Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to read through the letters, but for the public's benefit as well. Any discussion?
Three minutes sounds reasonable to me.
Are we all in agreement? Thumbs up? Excellent. Madam Clerk, move forward, please.
Okay, so three minutes?
Three minutes. Thank you.
One second. I'm trying to get my timer. Give me one second, please.
Take your time.
Okay. Shay Hancock, "To whom it may concern, being a single mom with four children in fourth and fifth grade and one computer, it will be very difficult to work full-time and to be sure my fourth and fifth grade kids are prepared for virtual learning. I work during school hours. I have not figured out a way to work and to be at home for 100% virtual learning school at the same time. I am a parent with two kids in different grades. I can't quit my job and do not wish for my kids to be left behind due to this virtual learning. I will be at work. How would I juggle the two? It would be great if something could be done to help the single mom with this 100% virtual learning while she is at work." Travis Rover, "RPS should absolutely utilize schools as emergency childcare sites. Our district's students deserve and require this additional level of care. We absolutely support this initiative regardless of whether or not some see it as contrary to the decision to pursue virtual schooling." Mina Clemmons, "I am an RPS parent, 24th grader. I am a single mother who lost her job in March due to COVID. Five months later, after not being able to obtain unemployment benefits, I have just started a new job, working nights five days a week, and am trying to stay afloat. Unfortunately, I do not have any kind of remote work option, nor will I have access to PTO leave. Traditionally, I had my father assist me with after-school help with my son. However, he is a chemotherapy patient who has managed to put his cancer into remission, so this means he can have little to no contact with my son right now. I have had random friends and neighbors helping me while I get back to work. I am struggling to figure out how to homeschool my child, and I am dreading the weeks to come as I feel as if I've run out of time. I've battled almost losing my home, not having food to feed us, and many late bills that keep piling up. I can't imagine paying what little bit of hourly wage I am making for childcare. It could potentially devastate this delicate financial ecosystem my family is currently drowning in. I'd love to get more info on your community help ideas and what that would mean for the kids of Richmond whose parents are in the same boat as myself. Thank you for your time." Jessica Parker, "I am writing in regards to the recent inquiry into the need for childcare within RPS. While I am fortunate to be able to bring my daughter to work with me currently, if something was coordinated in conjunction with the district to facilitate childcare, I would definitely be interested. This option would allow my child to be around a smaller group of kids with trained personnel to assist with the virtual learning. I, for one, am an awful teacher. Coupled with the new way of teaching, i.e. regrouping, I feel that my child may benefit more academically by having a trained professional facilitating the learning or at least be there to assist. While I can understand the argument, how is this option different from just reopening schools? It is very different. Not every child will need this resource. Therefore, drastically reducing the number of bodies participating, I recently have been faced with a major dilemma. As I mentioned, I am blessed to bring my child to work. However, I just today was offered a much better position elsewhere for a decent salary. I would not be able to take her with me, so now I am forced to decide between taking the job and paying huge amounts of money in private daycare settings and end up bringing home less money, less, or to stay where I am at just to keep her with me. While I am leery about sending her, if this even happens, I feel so much for the other parents who aren't so lucky. I have no family, so if my job wasn't as understanding, I would have to quit back in, would have had to quit back in March. There is no right answer or path regarding COVID. And yes, our children are our number one priority, but allowing the city to use its school space to provide free or affordable childcare is a must. As I said, not everyone will need it, but for the ones who do, this opportunity could mean the difference between staying afloat and sinking. Please move swiftly with this decision so the appropriate safety measures can be implemented." Samantha Barony, "I would like to express my support to open school buildings in a limited capacity for those who need childcare during our virtual learning experience. My family will not use this service. However, we have too many families who are panicked as they try to navigate the choice between caring for their child and financially supporting their family. I feel our community can be flexible with the ongoing strains we all are experiencing. Undoubtedly, I will need to call on my community for help during the upcoming months. When that happens, I hope our decision-makers will consider all options to assist RPS's biggest asset, our families. Thank you for your time and consideration." Mary Argentino, "Yes, yes, if at all possible. It seems that the facilities can manage small numbers of children with adult supervision, and school resources could be used to give the kids instruction and managed outdoor activities. The kids do need exercise. I'm impressed with the way RPS has tried to promote innovative, creative ways to deal with our crisis. Figure out creative, safe ways for school facilities to be used for childcare. Thanks." Leah Cruz, "I agree with this. I am a working parent myself. Also, my child has an IEP." Olivia Jones Lewis, "While I understand the need for childcare, the idea to open schools for that purpose delivers an inconsistent message regarding the safety of the children in our community. Other districts have already experienced an increase in numbers since schools have opened in person. The decision to do so isn't logical, and I do not agree." Rosa Cardoza, "I have registered my daughters online. They told me they would call me to bring the documents, and they still haven't called me. I don't know what school will be my daughters." Candice Michelle, "I will help provide childcare. How do I sign up?" Jenna Conway, "As a parent of two Richmond Public Schools students, I am writing to encourage the Richmond School Board to provide access to their facilities, internet connectivity, and supplies for purposes of emergency childcare. Since March, Richmond Public Schools and the greater Richmond community have worked as partners to support our most vulnerable families and children through the COVID-19 crisis. Volunteers have worked alongside RPS staff to feed children. Community organizations have partnered with RPS educators to provide vibrant summer school and enrichment activities, and we have all supported each other as we struggle to survive in this new normal. As demonstrated in the daily shout-outs from superintendent Camus, no one person or organization can do this alone. We are all in this together. In this spirit, I encourage you to open your doors to city and childcare partners who want to offer safe, supervised spaces for virtual learning for families and children in need. Most Richmond families are figuring out how to make virtual learning work, but this will be impossible for some families. We have families in our community who have to work out of the home as essential workers and have to leave their children alone with a sibling or bring them to a job site, none of which will enable these students to participate in virtual learning. These families cannot afford childcare, nor can they afford to lose their job or turn down a shift. Many are living paycheck to paycheck and are not eligible for government benefits. We have families in homeless or transient situations whose children cannot participate in virtual learning where they live. We have young children with special needs whose home environment may be too crowded, too loud, or too chaotic, and who can only thrive in a safe, supervised space for virtual learning. All of our most vulnerable RPS students deserve a safe, supervised space where they can learn and thrive. By providing free access to a small number of our schools, ensuring internet connectivity, and offering the supplies needed for virtual learning depending on needs of kids participating, you can help make this emergency childcare more affordable. For families in most need, this care must be free or very low cost. By partnering with the city and childcare partners who are expert in keeping kids, families, and staff in safe accordance with all state and federal guidelines, you can rest assured that your most vulnerable students will be taken care of. Please note that this is not about reopening schools. Most families understand why we need to be virtual and can manage and afford this. This is about a partnership to provide a service to last resort." Alyssa and Jeffrey Ward, "We are committed Richmond Public Schools' parents of a third grader at Lynnwood Holton Elementary. We are writing today to advocate that the Richmond School Board provide access to their facilities and resources, such as internet connections and supplies, to those organizations willing to provide emergency childcare to students. Our family has two full-time employed parents with stable jobs and incomes who are able to work from home. While it is a unique challenge to manage our work with our elementary-aged child and toddler at home, we have the privilege of flexible schedules and compassionate supervisors at our state jobs. We plan to do our best to make virtual learning happen at home despite not having local family who can help. We are not writing this plea to you today on behalf of our family. Rather, we write to you for those families to do not have the same privileges and options. We are both public servants who have devoted our careers to meeting the basic needs and protecting the rights of Virginians, and we cannot stand by and be silent as we see the needs of these children and families glaring before us. Richmond Public Schools has done so much good in partnership with the community during this very difficult time. We have seen that good work, including all the efforts to distribute food and technology and books into the communities that need them most. We also respect the choice to move all virtual school for the fall and do support this and believe that, given the resources available and the evolving pandemic, that it is in the best interest of teachers, staff, students, and families. Not every student can learn at home during these times. Many families are going to have considerable, serious challenges with virtual learning in their homes. Some families have inflexible work schedules, numerous children at home, limited internet connectivity, if any, and home environments that bear challenges for learning and attention. For this portion of our students, we need options to keep them safe, supervised, and in the best space possible for them to keep up with their learning and their socio-emotional wellness. RPS will have school buildings available. Some RPS schools are viable options for hosting programs like the YMCA, which do their best to serve families who are in dire need of support in order to survive this difficult chapter in our history. Please help these students by giving these programs access to school facilities, internet connectivity, and supplies so students can learn virtually. Financial assistance is also key. It is critical that these programs be available for free or for very low cost, and they prioritize those families with the most significant need." Jamie Weinstein, "I am writing in concern about the school buildings being used for daycare. I have so many questions surrounding this. It was my understanding that RPS was closing the schools due to safety concerns as some of our buildings have decades of neglect. If the buildings were not safe enough for teachers and students, how are they safe for daycare and workers, presumably at a higher risk, who are not familiar with the buildings? Where are the additional city resources for this? The Arthur Ashe Center, Southside Community Center, synagogues, churches, and mosques, et cetera? I am seeing individuals, some who don't even have children, set up and offer their homes as small pods, but I have yet to see corporations, sports teams, or other entities offer suggestions and solutions. This is truly going to be a team effort, and this team is our community. Where is the rest of the team?" Amber Bonner, "I am a mother to three children attending RPS, a preschooler, a first grader, and a sixth grader. While I do agree that virtual school is the safest option, this puts my livelihood at stake. I work as a manager at a bank, and their father is self-employed. While we live in separate households, before COVID, we were able to come together to support our kids, but with virtual school, we cannot do that. Both of our jobs are too demanding for us to focus on both work and our children's learning now that they will be home. I am in the predicament where I may have to put in my two weeks' notice. That would leave me with no income and being forced to file for unemployment and possibly government assistance. I have taken the survey, but the results aren't quick enough, being that school starts in two weeks, and I would also need to put in a two weeks' notice. I understand that this is challenging for all sides and that we are faced with new challenges due to COVID. I feel that schools should delay opening until everything is in order, even if it's just for a few weeks." Adam Tigler, "I am a resident and parent in Northside. I am writing to express opposition to using our schools for childcare centers. Childcare is understandably a difficult situation, and it has been since March. The need for childcare now during the pandemic is not a new need just because schools are opening virtually. The school board, at the recommendation of Mr. Camus, rightfully decided to start schools virtually because it was the safest option from a virus standpoint. While not completely the same, we have seen, as universities have reopened in person, they are closing and going all virtual. Mr. Camus made the right decision initially, and it should not be up to the mayor to reverse that option for a use that is not for school. Until our school buildings reopen, our kindergarten son will be doing his virtual learning from home. That is not an easy option, but it is the safest option. Due to the consideration process to which this board should not approve, I have questions about the safety of anyone in the school buildings during this time. What steps are being taken to ensure anyone, child or adult, who enters the building are screened for symptoms of any illness? Will these services be contained to a portion of the building while others are off limits? What happens in the event of confirmed COVID cases, and what does that communication verification process look like? We know in any childcare centers, upfront and honest communication about illness may not always be upfront. People need to work. I understand." Regardless of the answers to these questions, the school buildings should not be used, and the board should not be pressured to alter their original plan. The city should examine other buildings or partnership opportunities with other existing childcare centers if this is something they want to pursue." Jasmine Henley, "I was wondering when we will be notified of who our child's children teacher is for the year. I have a preschooler, fourth grader, and sixth grader. Also, how are the schedules working, middle schoolers, as far as expletory classes? Is foreign language and others still being offered or just the basic classes? This is our first year attending RPS." And that concludes the public comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. As we move forward, the next item is Board Action Items, 3.01. Receive for action the Personnel Actions. That, Ms. Lee?
Good evening, Ms. Burke. I'm happy to provide a high-level summary or address any questions from the board.
Any question? So we do have a list of which to vote on tonight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so there are no discussions regarding that? So may I receive a motion to accept the Personnel Actions report as listed? Go move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Page and Mr. Barlow. All right, it has been moved improperly second that we received the actions as listed. Are you ready for the question? Any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson? And Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you so very much. We'll move on to 3.02. Receive.
Yes, Felicia. I'm on the call. So am I. Liz Dor is on the call.
I'm sorry. I did not see either one of you come in. So for the vote, Ms. Door?
Yes.
And Ms. Cosby?
Upstaying.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for that as well because I see both of them. Thank you. Forgive me. All right. Now we're ready to move on with the recommendations. The recommendation regarding the support of the city for our virtual learning schools. Mr. Camus?
Thank you, Ms. Burke and School Board. I'm going to share my screen showing the presentation. One second. Ms. Burke, can you see that? Okay. So I would like to begin by sharing the data from the survey that the city administered. This is data as of Friday, so it may have shifted a little bit over the weekend, but I do believe it's fairly representative of where the survey is today. As you can see, there was representation from, I believe, it looks like every school across RPS, which is a good reflection. Obviously, some schools more than others, but we did have good distribution across the city. And the key questions, I've shared the information here. First, are you able to provide or have you made childcare arrangements for your children while RPS is all virtual? So of the roughly 1,300 respondents, about 28% said yes. About 61% said no, and just under 10% said, "For some of my children, but not all of my children." So a little over 800 respondents saying, "No, they have not made childcare arrangements for their children while we are virtual." Then there was a question about the type of childcare that would best meet the needs for a family. And I'm actually going to go to the next screen because it spells out each of the options more clearly. So first, being watched by an older sibling, about 9%. Being watched by a hired caregiver, a little bit shy of 30%. Staying with another family member, friend, or having another family member or friend come to our house, about 24%. Forming a learning pod or group, about 3 to 10 students learning together with other families and sharing the care responsibility among parents, about 18%. Forming a learning pod or group, but hiring a teacher or caregiver, that's about 27%. Attending a childcare center, about 39%. Attending a childcare program in a provider's home, just under 14%. Attending a facility set up to provide facilitated learning and care while schools are closed for in-person learning, almost 60%, and other at 7%. So you can see about 60% indicating a desire for the type of facilitated learning that would occur in our facilities if we were to make them available. So based on this data, which clearly indicates a desire for this service, in addition to what I think we could all agree are the heart-wrenching stories of families who are struggling to ensure that their children have the appropriate supervision during our virtual semester while also maintaining their employment. We heard tonight of families that were worried about losing their jobs. We heard tonight of families that were worried about losing their jobs, then potentially uh, being in very difficult economic circumstances, potentially losing, uh, their apartment, their home. Um, and so I think it is clear that there are many families in Richmond this evening who are facing very difficult circumstances, uh, this fall. And we knew by going a hundred percent virtual, uh, we discussed this collectively, that we would be putting some families in this position. Of course, we, uh, never want to do that, but that is a natural byproduct of the decision that we made. And so based on that and based on the data, it's my recommendation that we do move forward and offer five of our more modern facilities, uh, for the use of emergency childcare. Um, these are facilities that, uh, have sufficiently modern ventilation systems that we think they could be, uh, safe and appropriate places for young people and caregivers. But per the board's guidance, we are outlining, uh, a set of stipulations that would go with this recommendation. And I do want to note that, uh, the city has been incredibly supportive of this approach. Uh, the mayor has indicated, uh, a commitment to using three million dollars of the city's cares allocation, uh, for this purpose and has indicated a, uh, strong desire to ensure that if we do move forward, uh, that two-thirds or more of the spots are made available free to families who most need it. So, um, if we do move forward, I, I, I feel confident, uh, that the city, um, will be able to ensure uh, that all of these requirements are met. Um, and I do think it's an opportunity for, uh, strong collaboration and support of the children of Richmond who most need this support. A few notes, uh, on the stipulations. Uh, we would, uh, have the final say on the number of seats that would be made available at each site. Um, I did not include a particular number this evening. I did want to hear some feedback from the board on that. Uh, as I discussed, the city has already, uh, volunteered that two-thirds of the seats would be made available at no cost to children who qualify for SNAP, TANF, Medicaid or other categorical benefits. Children of essential workers would be prioritized. Also, providers would be required to follow all of the health protocols that we outlined earlier this summer when we were planning for in-person instruction. The five facilities would be open to any provider that has the capacity to run childcare in accordance with our health protocols. So this, uh, recommendation is not provider specific. It would be open to any provider that has the capacity to, uh, provide the service. Unfortunately, RPS would not be able to provide transportation because our best system will be used every day for food transportation. Uh, no RPS staff would be used. This includes custodians given our commitment uh, to not have our staff, uh, working in person with children and other adults. No RPS supplies would be used, um, and the five sites would receive a deep cleaning at no cost to RPS once the childcare is no longer needed. Finally, RPS would assume no liability for infection or any other negative outcomes, um, from the administration of the centers. And the five locations we are proposing, uh, for geographic purposes in the East End. First MLK, uh, for the North Side and West End, Holton. Uh, on the South Side, three locations, uh, South Side, West Huguenot, South Side, Central Miles Jones, and then South Side, East Blackwell. Uh, and with that, I will conclude my presentation and glad to take any questions that the board may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're ready for discussion? Questions? Okey dokey. In the chat box, I see Scott Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and thank you, Mr. Cameras for, um, for laying out the recommendation. I do, I do think I'll need a little bit more, um, detail to be, uh, flushed out here before I feel comfortable moving forward, but, um, have we had, I know, Mr. Cameras, you mentioned having some further discussion as a board here about the number of seats. Have there been any, um, discussions or expectations, um, set with the city in that respect? Uh, that's my first question. Um, the next couple are, um, you know, I think it's, and I, we've all probably said this at some point, but we did, uh, we did go virtual for a reason, so I want to make sure that, um, we're very clear about the expectations with respect to the health protocols. Uh, so I'm glad to see that, um, the protocols that we outlined earlier this summer, uh, will be taken into consider, will, will be required. Um, but I do think, uh, having that formalized in a document with these providers is important. And also, I think we as a board need to see what a final set would look like because we did, um, we did slow down on some of our work on that when we made the decision to go virtual, at least on the board level. So I'm sure that the administration has some more documentation there. Um, and then the, uh, the other questions that I don't think are, are quite addressed yet is, um, on my end at least, is what the expectations are in the event of an infection at, uh, one of these facilities or the family member. I think we have to be very clear about expectations there. And then, um, I do think that RPS needs to retain, um, the ability to retract permission, should we grant permission for, um, certain organizations to, uh, to work with, work within, um, our school buildings. And, um, I'm curious to know if we have talked about what sort of enforcement expectations or inspections or things of that nature look like, um, with respect to these childcare providers. If we hear a lot of reports coming out of a school, for example, or see pictures floating around of a bunch of students or adults walking around without masks on, I think that that would be a, a real cause for concern. Not, not so much the pictures, but the, the risk that our, our students and the adults may be, um, put in and the risk, greater risk of community spread. And then, um, I also think we, this, this is something that would need to be subject to continuous monitoring on our part, given, um, given, uh, the infection rates in the community and, uh, continued monitoring of that so that we, as a board or the administration, can act quickly in the event that we think it's necessary to shut down these facilities. So, I, I, I think first and foremost, what I want a little bit more discussion on because I saw, uh, that the mayor's spokesperson in a recent article, uh, specifically mentioned that we'd be able to help out a lot of students. And of course, we want, we want to be able to help out those who, uh, have the greatest need, but, um, I, I don't want to put our students and families at risk here either. So, uh, can you provide a little bit more clarity on, on what the discussions have looked like with the city for those expectations or with the community, um, at, to this point?
Yes, in my most recent conversations with the city, we did not explore a specific number of students, though I think something in the order of a hundred students per site would likely be, uh, what we would be aiming for. Uh, obviously that would give us about five hundred seats, um, which would cover a substantial portion. It appears maybe two-thirds of what the estimated need is based on the survey. That would also allow us to, you know, have no more than, you know, somewhere between five and ten students per room, uh, which would allow for very significant social distancing. So that would be my, my best estimate at this time, though if the board felt strongly about a higher number or lower number, um, certainly glad to take, uh, that guidance, uh, from the school board. Um, you had also mentioned the health protocols, absolutely, we would, um, uh, well, we reduce all of this to writing to make sure that it was, it was clear. Um, but certainly the health expectations and, um, and yes, uh, we would ensure that, uh, we have the ability to, uh, rescind our permission if we feel or learn that, um, protocols aren't being followed. And then finally, uh, I believe you asked about, uh, protocols, if there is an infection, things of that nature. Um, we have, uh, some of those in our health policy that we had, uh, been preparing for, um, for in-person instruction, so we could certainly, uh, utilize those. Um, we haven't quite gotten that far down the path just yet because we wanted to see if this was going to be, um, a viable, uh, option or not. If it is, certainly, we would make sure that there was very clear guidance and expectations around, um, what folks would do in the event of infection.
Okay. Thank you so much. We do have someone else in the chat room, Ms. Page?
Yes, thank you, uh, Ms. Burke. So my question is, what were the partnership, because I've seen that, you know, we are talking about providers. So are we, what providers are we talking about? And, and I'm particularly talking about the faith-based community. How would that partnership look if, um, there's a church in the community that families know, feel comfortable with sending their children to? And the church, you know, can meet all the requirements of, you know, for the childcare? So my question is, what would that partnership look like or do we have any information regarding that? So is the church, so churches have to set up in the schools or can they set up? And, you know, within their church?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, so I think both options would be available, Ms. Page. I know, um, we have been in contact with a number of churches, uh, in the region, some on the South Side that, that you know of, um, some in the East End, um, that have already taken upon themselves to establish a facilitated learning center. Um, one in the East End is doing so for a number of students from Fairfield Court. One on the South Side for a number of schools, um, and there are others that are, that are popping up. Uh, they're using their Sunday school spaces or their social halls, uh, for these types of, of learning centers. If there were a church that wanted to use one of the facilities, the proposal I have brought forth to you would allow for that, assuming they could meet all of the health expectations that we have outlined. Um, my understanding from talking to a number of pastors in the region is that, uh, most who are interested in helping, uh, intend to do so at their facility, uh, for understandable reasons. It's the facility that they know and what they can offer is proximity. So children who live one, two, three, four blocks away as opposed to several miles away, which would be the case for, I think, most of our, uh, school-based centers. But, uh, again, the schools would be open to any nonprofit that could meet the health and safety requirements. Um, I do want to note that RPS wouldn't be, uh, the ones kind of navigating and organizing all the different partners and whatnot. That is something that we would, um, advise on, but the city would, is really taking the lead on and, and frankly grateful to them for that since we don't have the capacity to, to take that on right now. So, um, the, uh, they have the infrastructure through their out-of-school time, um, network to be able to kind of work through all the different details that would be necessary.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I, I appreciate the clarification, um, regarding, um, the role of the city in organizing the, uh, the program. Um, I'm, I'm, I wanted to get some clarity too, as the survey that went out, um, I, if, if I'm, if I'm understanding, that was, that went out to all parents. Um, uh, but yet I, I had thought that the goal of this was to provide childcare specifically for essential workers. Um, so if, if you could speak on that clarity, um, and then, uh, you, you know, I sent, uh, an email with a number of questions that, um, in advance of this meeting. And I'm not sure if the administration is, um, able to speak on all of those. Um, I do think it would be incredibly helpful to have the conversation with the city at the table, given that they're, um, taking the lead on this. Um, so, uh, I'm happy to read through those questions, uh, which I guess, which I guess I'll do. Um, uh, but you know, the first thing I want to get clarity on is to, to ensure that we are specifically talking about essential workers as agreed upon or as defined, um, at the state level for the program. Um, so the questions that I had, uh, asked was, uh, regarding the, the school facilities themselves. Um, uh, the list included, uh, MLK Middle School and Huguenot High School. And those happen to be two areas where we are building, you know, we built brand-new elementary schools. And I was wondering, um, why the elementary school, new, new elementary school facilities were not considered. Um, the question was how will essential employee qualification be determined? So what kind of documentation or, or otherwise will need to be provided? What is the application process look like? Um, when will the application process begin? Will it be first come, first served? Who will determine who can attend? What criteria will be used? Um, how many providers will provide services at each, each location? What will be the cost of the program for those students who don't qualify for free services? Um, how can we ensure the ratio of free to paid services, um, as identified in the proposal? Especially given the lack of transportation. Um, how many seats does the administration recommend for each location? Given the provider staff, uh, availability, what is the maximum capacity anticipated at each location? Um, and I do think too, I mean, you know, is the city talking about potential hazard pay? Um, what technology will be available for students at these locations? What will be the expectation of staff at the childcare sites to support virtual learning? Families who are paying for services, paying the city for those services directly, or will they be paying the providers? How can we, uh, ensure that the city, uh, is held accountable for the cleaning that, um, that's been promised, uh, after the program ends? Uh, will the providers or the city be paying us to use the facilities? Um, uh, if so, how much? What are the costs that we will be incurring? Um, will that incur utilities, include the utilities? Will the district receive those funds and what is the estimated amount? Um, and so, uh, so those are the bulk of my questions. And, uh, and I also wanted to, uh, uh, reiterate, uh, Mr. Barlow's point. Mr. Barlow's point about, um, about, uh, ensuring that the health requirements are outlined. Um, given the, uh, uh, you know, the, the level of, um, uh, you know, this is a, a highly critical issue. Um, and there's a lot of liabilities at stake. My recommendation would be that, um, if this is something that, um, the board collectively agrees to move forward with, that the board, um, votes on a memorandum of understanding, which would outline, um, all of those health requirements that, um, we are stipulating in addition to, um, you know, the definition of, of the essential worker and the costs and, and how all of that is going to work. Um, you know, we, I think we, we just need to make sure that that is all very clearly documented.
Madam Chair, would you like me to go through all those questions or what would your?
We have a list of persons that would like to speak, um.
Can I, may I just speak to the essential worker question?
That would, please, however you want. All the questions, I think we all have them in front of us as well.
Ms. Gibson, my understanding is, uh, or what we're proposing is that, uh, essential workers would be prioritized, but it would not be exclusively for essential workers. Um, so for example, um, a single parent who, uh, is, works at a grocery store may not be categorized as an essential worker, but, um, can't do their job virtually and say has three children at home, some of whom are young, um, may be making minimum wage, likely qualifies for TANF, SNAP. Um, that would also be the type of family that, that would qualify. So, um, I'm not sure where the line, the state has drawn the line on essential worker, but we did want to make sure that, um, a family in that situation, the GRT bus driver, again, folks like that, uh, would have access to this.
I just wanted to follow up. So, uh, grocery store worker would be an essential worker by the state definition, so that, um, that would be included. Um, but I, I, I do hope, uh, if, if, if it's okay, I, I, I think it's important that these questions are answered. Um, the administration is hoping that we are voting on this this evening. Um, I request that the board allow the administration- I request that the board allow the administration to go through those questions that I I sent in advance.
All right, Ms. Cosby, then Dr. Sapini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question or comment. As we create our criteria. That, you know, I appreciate the fact that for parents or families that meet TANF and SNAP. Income guidelines that they receive. Free. Childcare, but also we have a a lot of parents that may just be right at the right. They don't necessarily meet those requirements. They're right there. They fall in the middle. They're just, and who who suffer. And, you know, and they really cannot afford. $153 per week or something like that. I know there was a sliding scale. But that they also, I I guess what I'm saying is that we kind of extend those. Minimum requirements. Income requirements to make it more affordable or free. For parents who might not be at the SNAP or TANF. Levels, one. Second, this kind of goes back to what my colleague Ms. Page. Talked about is something that you even talked about, Mr. Cameras. Regarding those parents who might not necessarily fit into the essential worker category. But also, I guess what I want to say is. You know, the are during our last school board meeting, I I think this is one. And I'm in full support of this, if we are in all of this stuff up, this is one. Way that we can support our families. But it's the not, you know, it's not the end-all, be-all, and I think a second way that we really need to think about. And with the sense of urgency, and I don't know if it requires a vote or anything like that, but how will this administration? Work with some of the faith-based communities, some of the other communities, other nonprofits or organizations. That are setting up these hubs in the community. You know, people might not be able to get to the MLKs, the Huguenots, what have you because of transportation. And we're saying, no, we're not providing the transportation. There might be other organizations within these communities, as you mentioned, Mr. Cameras, within walking distance. That can provide support, but how are we supporting those organizations? How are we making sure that? That there is some shared consistency regarding. You know, what the expectations are in terms of learning, in terms of the school day, is there any flexibility with that? I know, as we know, there's one organization over on the south side, and so this pastor, he's employing RPS. Teachers who during the day, they're during doing RPS work. But maybe after 3:00, they will be working with this organization. So for those students who could not log in at 9:15, 11:00 or 12:00. They can log in at 3:00 when they're with this organization, right? So how do we make sure that there's some flexibility that those students are one-counted? And that we are supporting these groups. With some of the minimum things that they need. And I and I think we really have to think about this, especially in light of the fact that, you know, we are having a delay with our computers. And making sure that our kids have connectivity. Not just if you're coming to. An RPS facility, but connectivity throughout. The Richmond region, you know, we have people, as you've mentioned, they've been stepping up and being part of our village, you know, since this all began. So how do we make sure we support them? And have a more formalized program, I guess, of support.
Yes.
If I may, could I call on Dr. Harris just to say a few words on how we are supporting some of those partners?
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the question, Ms. Cosby. One of the main things that we've done, and we published it actually today in the RPS Direct. Is we created a community partnership guide for facilitated learning. So we've talked to several churches. Already, but what was missing, to your point, Ms. Cosby, is that how can we give all of these people who want have goodwill and want to do this very clear guidelines? On what is it that we are looking for to help you move a student throughout the day? So it has everything from, thank you Superintendent Cameris. So you'll see here in this guide. It's an overview that really starts one with our just kind of expectations. So that everyone is is engaging, as we say, with love, but it really goes through, how do you get started as a facilitated learning center? What are some of those basic supplies? But also helps people understand our schedule, the priorities for the first week of school, as well as guidelines for instruction. It goes into the platform we are using. And again, because we are not facilitating these ourselves, we want to make sure that we're sharing best practices. On areas of language support, technology, training, tutorials, licensing. So you'll see we cover these. So at least we know we're going to have multiple people who will be starting, but how can we make sure they all have the same information? So the guide addresses the content, but what we've also done is set up training sessions. So for example. In about a week and a half, we're working with the Baptist Ministers Convention. To train them on this guide, and then we've also posted several trainings that we're doing. To make sure that we are actually providing the professional development on facilitated learning centers, so people feel really comfortable. We had our first training last week with 65 people on the call, including city ambassadors who each work in each one of the housing. Communities as well as members from RRHA. So it was important that we build the capacity of the community. Who also can go out and share resources and train others on those guides. So those are some of the immediate things that we're doing, the guide as well as the training. And then we'll also continue to partner. So if we do have resources like desks or anything like that. We're making sure those get to organizations who are ready and willing in close proximity to our families.
I'm really, I'm sorry, Madam.
That's fine.
Chair, I'm very encouraged to hear that. I think that is definitely, we're moving in the right direction with that. Thank you. And also just, I'm glad to hear about the resources and making sure that we can indeed. Help organizations. Or, you know, even neighborhood hubs. With some of the resources that they needed, whether it's the desk or PPE or what have you. So that's great. I will just follow up, if you don't mind, very quickly, just want to make sure that we do have something that's scheduled. Inside our, some of our communities, as I mentioned to you all before, and I'm going to sound like a broken record until I see that it's. Published. And that is done, and that is to make sure that we have something that is consistent. You know, in our communities, in Mosby, in Wickham, in Creighton, in other communities. A constant presence to help people get connected.
Yes, it was published today, Ms. Cosby. We're, we're calling them community walkshops. Just to be healthy and safe and doing them outside, but they are, we have those going on. In each one of those communities, and then I hear you on the consistency. Today was our first day of welcoming our new family liaisons. Some of them who are entering into the role, who were with RPS, others who are new to RPS, but we have about 23 of them. And we have more capacity on the ground to lead these trainings and do these walkshops, but we have them covered. And then we'll continue to make sure, Ms. Cosby, we're consistent in those communities.
Okay, great. Am I on mute? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, and just it, as long as it's continuous, this is one time, but it has to be. Continuous. Throughout. And something that they know. I know when such and such a day, you know, RPS is going to have a presence here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby and Dr. Harris. Dr. Sapini, followed by Mr. Barlow.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cameras, you mentioned that essentially the city would be the ones spearheading this. So my question, or one of my questions is. Who would the point person be? From the city and of course, do they know our buildings? Also, I've asked from way back when a couple of times, but have any of our schools? Or which ones of our schools have been cleaned already? And also pertain to the air quality, is it a negative pressure or recycled air? And regarding Ms. Gibson's question, which I think are very pertinent. Because if there are any budget implications, we definitely need to know that ahead of time before any kind of vote. And lastly, you said that you'll be providing everything that includes all mask, PPE and things of that nature.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I may. Yes, Dr. Sapini, all supplies, PPE, et cetera, would be provided by the provider or. Purchased by the city. We do not anticipate any budgetary impact as. None of our personnel, none of our supplies, none of our transportation, et cetera, would be utilized. You had asked. Forgive me, what was your first question?
Oh, who who would be the point person?
I believe it would be. Eva Collin in the mayor's office who oversees education and youth matters. She's very familiar with our buildings and of course, while we would not be organizing and managing all of this. We would certainly be consulted. They are, RPS is building, after all, so. We would make sure to be involved in that process.
And do you know what kind of air we have, whether it's negative?
So in my conversations with the city, they, the the facilities folks. They've discussed using what is called, I've learned bipolar ionization, which is basically. And Ms. Burke knows about this from our JCT meetings. In layman's terms. In essence, an electrification of the air before it gets pushed into the room by the air handler unit. Which kills viruses, germs, apparently mold, other spores, things of that nature. So. And that is something that doesn't require a whole new air handling unit. It's can be in essence plugged into. The existing infrastructure. But that is the extent of my technical knowledge on this matter. If you have further questions, I'm I'm glad to get someone. More expert in this field to follow up.
Do all, do all of our buildings have that?
Well, none of our buildings have this right now, but this is something that. We would want to install. For whenever we return. To the extent it is possible, given the ventilation system in a school, so a very old school, for example. You wouldn't be able to do this because it doesn't have the air handling capacity to to utilize it. But knowing that we would want to put this in place at any at any school that has a modern HVAC system. What we would like to do is ultimately use. The future version of CARES funding to implement this in all of our facilities where we could implement it. And we could prioritize any facilities that we're using for childcare first, knowing that it would benefit all RPS students when we return.
Which, okay, thank you. Which which buildings have been cleaned already?
I believe they all have been. I would ask Ms. Hudasko. If she has additional details on that.
Sure. Good evening. No, not every building has been cleaned yet. About two-thirds. Are done. We made a transition with one of our vendors to be able to give or contractors to give even more business to two of the. The strongest. Vendors, and since we knew that we weren't opening up the buildings, the extended timeline. Seemed appropriate, but. They should all be completed, I would say, by mid-September.
Now. You will be getting back to, I guess, the list of questions.
We have, we're going to continue to with the other people to speak. They will get back with it. Are you done? All right, thank you, Dr. Sapini. Mr. Barlow, Ms. Dour, then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to start with props for the facilitated learning center guide. I really like that. I think it's great that. We're helping to provide some guidance to to folks who'll be working with our our students and and to help them do that more effectively. I did want to, I did want to discuss very briefly the potential for partnering with the faith community. I'm certainly all about providing support to anyone who's who's helping our students, but I would want to be careful about. Whether there would be any type of religious instruction or anything for our students under a city plan like this, because I do think we'd want. Any any student who or family who needs these. Resources to feel comfortable. Comfortable in the facilities and with the providers that we have there. So I would want to be clear about expectations around that issue as well. And then I'd also like to circle back to the questions that Ms. Gibson posed. I I read those. I shared a lot of those. Questions and concerns and tried not to to duplicate that too much with my initial questions tonight, but I do think virtually all of them are on questions that I'd want answered before we finalize our. Our our final decision and confirmation of of whatever governing agreement we have with the organizations moving forward in the city. So. I hope to to see that and and some of these other issues that we've brought up, followed up on before we finalize.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dour.
Hi. Thanks for all the information and future information. One other person that I'd add to this list is there are, I think there are probably. Two groups of questions. One are some of the kind of operating nitty-gritty questions, and two are the things that we. You know, we have to answer as a group before we can make a decision. So I guess as you're, as you're talking that through, I would love your thoughts there. And I would also love your thoughts on, I'm mindful that school starts next week, so. You know. I think probably if we're going to move forward with this in time for school to start, we would need to make a decision tonight, but I would like your. Your thoughts on on that, on the timeline as well. You know, maybe there's something we can do like Mr. Barlow proposed. Regarding fund transfers where it seems like there probably does need to be an MOU of some sort in place. But that we might not meet again before that MOU goes into place. So, you know, I don't know, I would love your thoughts on process, Ms. Burke and Mr. Cameras. Understanding that we're under a tight deadline, but these are some really good questions that folks are asking.
Mr. Cameras, you want to address that?
Yes, I certainly think it would be ideal for the board to take action this evening, if possible, given that school is one week away. I would note, even if the board were to take action this evening. I do not think it's realistic that these centers would be up and running for the first day of school. I think we're likely a couple of weeks out, but. You know, if we weren't to make this decision until the September 14th meeting. Then it would probably be sometime in October before these centers were up and running. So I do think every day matters for families who who need this support. I appreciate your guidance to think about sort of critical questions for this evening as distinct from the operational ones, and I'm glad to. Try to categorize them as I go through them. But it would also, if if the board feels there's a question that that they need for tonight, that's helpful for me for me to know as well, and to the extent I have the answer, of course, I will provide it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Page, then Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is more of a comment. Just want to thank Dr. Harris for the information, the guidance, because. One thing that we have to. Because one thing that we have to be, I guess, aware of, you know, that consistency. Because the last thing we want is for our children to fall through the cracks. And with your guide, you seem like you have answered the questions, requirements, stipulations for the faith-based community or for whatever nonprofit that would like to provide a daycare for our students. But one thing we also need to keep in mind, our families are hurting. And if we delay this decision, this will have a huge impact on our families who are greatly in need. And so if we fumble the ball on this, think of all the families and the children that would be impacted by us delaying our decision. Accountability, transparency, yes, is a must. But our families are dependent on us to make a decision so that we can move forward. And so then they-
Did you freeze? Did Ms. Page freeze?
I think so.
Okay. All right. We'll go on to Mr. Young then and come back to Ms. Page.
Well, Madam Chair, Ms. Page said precisely what was on my mind. There was some inquiry relevant to chronology, which I think is very important. But I think Ms. Page said it well, as did the superintendent. The chronology is it's here and now. Our families are, many of our families are at a breaking point. And I think imperative that we do everything that we can, so long as we're prudent doing it, to meet them where they're at and provide them opportunity to address what for a lot of our families constitute a crisis moment. Thank you.
All right. I think Ms. Page has, is not on right now. Okay. Is there any more discussion regarding, if not, I'll say my share, my part if I may at this time. All good questions, all good thoughts. And Ms. Page, as Mr. Young just stated, hit it dead on the head and then some. Our families, our children. But my major concern was, as stated at our last meeting, just to make sure that we have those pods or those hubs in place, as Ms. Cosby stated, because everyone may not have transportation to certain places. And there are churches in this area that have already stepped up, stepped up. And I do hope that in some way they're compensated as well. But I do know, just as we rent out our schools for activities, some churches meet in our schools and they have certain guidelines and a contract or whatever to follow. So I want us to be mindful of, this is not our program. This is the city's program through the money that they are receiving. They're asking to use our facilities. But so far as the nitty gritty of all of it per se, much falls under their umbrella. Whether it's the Y, whether it's the church, whether it's whoever, whomever is in the building, that will be their responsibility. And of course, we want all of our children to be safe. We want all of our children, they already are, unfortunately, a lot of children have missed that on instructions since March. So I believe time is of the essence. And, excuse me, I hope that we can move forward at this point because school will be open in less than two weeks. So Scott Barlow has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Gibson's ahead of me.
Oh, I'm sorry. One moment.
Excuse it, Madam Chair.
Yes.
My computer cut off. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. So we'll go back to Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow.
So I was trying to make the motion, so I don't know what you heard, what was cut off. So that's my only question.
All right. Let's go ahead and hear from Ms. Gibson and Mr. Barlow and Mrs. Sapini. And then we'll entertain your motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm incredibly disappointed that we are in a position where we're essentially voting on something with very, very little information. The information that I'm requesting is not excessive by any means. We are tasked to govern and in order to govern, we need documentation. So essentially, we have not identified any budget implication that this might have for the district. As you mentioned, Ms. Burke, that we have had providers rent our facilities in the past. And we are apparently moving forward without any discussion about the cost that we might be incurring as a district operationally and any revenue. We have no idea how much, you know, how many students we're even talking about having in each school. We have no idea. We talk about equity and yet we have not talked about the fact that if folks don't have access to transportation, you know, that single mom who works at the grocery store, how is she going to get her kid to the school? So is this about helping families or is it about elections? And I'll be frank, I'm not sure. I don't understand why the city waited so long to make this recommendation. That's put us in a position where we are forced to vote a week before school starts. It does not, it doesn't make any sense. And I worry that in the scramble to make this thing happen, it doesn't help the families that it's trying to serve. I want very much to support this. I am a parent myself and, you know, next week, I don't know how I'm going to do it, you know? I don't know. I want to support this, but I am tasked to govern the schools. And as a person who is, you know, accountable for how the district is run, we cannot make decisions with a document that has a dozen or so bullet points on it. This is not, this isn't, this is not how it works. So my sense is that I will abstain from the vote this evening. And my request is that, that at our next meeting, that regardless of whether there is a vote that proceeds this evening, that the administration provides the MOU with the details that are essential in ensuring that if the city is using our facility, that we have covered our bases to ensure that they are used as they are intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And the next person, I believe, is Mr. Barlow?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to opening up the facilities for use by, by community partners to help serve our students and their families. So I want to start by saying that. But I do want to make sure that we're putting in place the proper precautions. And I was glad to hear some positive discussion about that this week. But I did say at the last meeting, and I, you know, I don't necessarily view day one of the school year to be a drop dead point to have this all figured out. Because I think we have to make sure that all proper precautions are being taken. And I know that it will put a stress on our families. Our families have been under a lot of stress throughout the summer and they were through, going through a lot of stress with the situation during the spring as well. So I don't want to unnecessarily drag that out. But I do want to make sure that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed before a final decision is made. So to sort of beg you back off of Ms. Gibson's request, I would, whether this passes tonight or not, I would like to make sure that any updates related to the MOU, related to the health precautions being taken, related to our ability to inspect the facilities, to terminate all those types of issues that have come up tonight and have come up in some past discussions are continued to be addressed with us. Because I don't want to just, just to move into it and have it drop off our radar. Because I know we'll be busy with beginning of the year, school updates and all kinds of, you know, issues related to the start of the school year. So I definitely want to see what the documentation, the expectations are. I want to see what the MOU looks like. I'm not personally ready to move forward with that vote tonight. I understand the desire from colleagues to do so, but I'm not going to try to get in the way of it either, as long as I have assurances from the administration and my colleagues that we will continue to monitor this to make sure that, that we're putting in place appropriate precautions. So I'll likely abstain here as well.
All right. Thank you. And we have Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Page.
Just real quick, pertaining to the system that you mentioned, Mr. Camaras, how quickly do, can it be installed? Would you happen to know that?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
I don't know off the top of my head. My understanding is the installation is a fairly quick matter. I think the question would be how long it takes to obtain the necessary equipment. And I can certainly inquire about that tomorrow with the relevant personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Sapini. Excuse me. Ms. Cosby?
I just wanted to articulate that I am in favor of moving forward with the partnership with the city. Or in voting on the intent to move forward, whether we have an MOU ironed out tonight, which of course we don't, or, you know, with the expectation that we have an MOU that we can then also vote on the content and context of the MOU. So to me, I thought this vote was, do we want to offer up our facilities? And because we don't have everything ironed out, well, as we talk about the MOU and have this MOU to review prior to our next board meeting, and then of course, vote on the MOU with the city. Do we want to enter into an MOU even, I guess, for the vote? Could be an option. Do we want to enter into a MOU? Have this MOU ironed out by the next meeting? If that would fit everyone. I just want to say this, that, you know, I was reading some article and, you know, I forget what area right now because you tend to just, everything becomes a blur. And all you know is that you're just in a situation that is, you didn't think that you would be in in this lifetime, right?
Yes.
But this is what I know. I know that some areas, they're able to, and they're talking about, how do they make sure that students don't lag so far behind? In some areas, they're fortunate enough to be able to pull resources and they're able to pay a teacher, you know? And their hub. And I think it's fabulous, right? That is good. But we have too many communities that are not able to do that. We have too many communities where parents are like, you know, hey, thank you for a subsidized scale, but I can't even afford the $33, okay? Much less the $153. And regardless, and this is even beyond, I even don't even like this, you know, emergency daycare because it is, and I understand, yes, we want our students to be safe, yes, the environment, I get all of that. That's why we close schools. But also I think that we have to have some measure of creativity in our thinking here as we're coming together. And as we're coming together with the community as well. And, you know, it's not something that we're just looking at here in Richmond. I know that people across the state are looking at it. As a matter of fact, I talked to a state legislator that was so upset because they realize not just what's happening now, but the long-term impact of students who are out of school. The long-term impact, how, you know, it's going to affect these students for years to come, pass their time with us in RPS or affect them when they're going to college or affect them to get into a trade or what have you. These are long-term ramifications, the fact that they're missing so much time from school. So I do think that we should act with urgency. I completely understand my colleagues wanting additional information. I think that let's be creative. Are we okay to enter into an MOU and then come back and tell us what that MOU is? We vote on the contents of that. Does it look good? Does it not? You know, what else do we want to include? What are the things that absolutely have to be in it? And come back to us and we want to see it. You know, I just, I just hope that we can be, have some flexibility. So that's what I ask.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. All right. We have Ms. Page and Ms. Dour. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Ms. Page.
So, Madam Chair, I was going to make the motion, but also to support the things that my colleague, Ms. Cosby, mentioned. We support this recommendation from the administration, but also put in, in place, bringing the MOU and the contents of the MOU back to the board. And because, yes, we do have oversight, but again, this is not our program. But we still have a responsibility and obligation to the families and our children of the city. So my recommendation, my motion is to receive the recommendation from the administration, the proposal from the city for support of virtual learning, but with stipulations that the administration bring back the contents of the MOU for the board support.
Second thought, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Ms. Page, can you put the wording of your motion into the chat, please, so I have it?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I was just getting ready to ask as well. So it has been moved, can we move forward? Are we ready? All right. It's been moved by Mrs. Page and second by Mr. Young to receive the report from the administration regarding our partnership with the city in regards to supporting our children with virtual learning. Mrs. Wilson, are we ready for the vote?
Is there any more discussion first, Madam Chair?
Are you ready for the question? Mr. Barlow has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate the opportunity to come back and look at an MOU before moving forward with it. I do have questions about the timeline though. So I'm trying to pick up on the distinction here between voting to approve it now and then having to, or having another opportunity to sort of vet it again before we move forward. So is the expectation here that if we are not comfortable with the MOU at our next meeting or when it's presented to us, then we would be able to delay the start of these services? Or is the expectation that by voting now, we do expect- these services, or is the expectation that by, by voting now, we, we do expect definitively to open up on day one, no matter the circumstances? Basically, I want to make sure that these questions are answered, that the actions that we've discussed are put in place. So I'm curious to hear, you know...
I'm thinking, thank you, I'm thinking, going back to what Mr. Cameras stated in regards to October, which will give us a chance tonight from the motion that Mrs. Page made and Mr. Young seconded, it was just to accept the recommendation and to move forward. Then we would need another motion, we could, regarding a timeline of the MOU. So if we can finish this motion first, then come back. Does that answer your question?
So if, you know, if there's a chance that we would be reviewing the MOU after, after we already start allowing the facilities to be open, then that would materially change how I approach the vote. So, so I guess I'd want that ironed out at the same time, so we're clear about that. As, as I mentioned when I first explained it, I am supportive of it if we're doing it, if we're putting in place right precautions. I do think we should be putting in, in place those precautions, and we should have them ironed out before we open up the facilities to these providers. So, so if we're going to review at our next meeting, the, the contents of the MOU, and then make a decision, and then allow for it to happen, that's one thing. If it's important for us at this point to signal to the city that we're very open and intend to do this so that they aren't stopping all work in the meantime to move forward, I get, I get why we would want to signal that with this vote, but I do want to make sure that these details are ironed out before a final decision is made to move forward.
Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note, if, if the board votes tonight to move forward, the city and providers are going to begin to commit resources towards that so that they can move expeditiously to effectuate this. So I would be hesitant to have this be a simply signal sending vote. I do think our families and the city and providers need to know, are we in it or not? I do think we can certainly bring the MOU back for review and tweaks and whatnot, but if we're leaving the door open after tonight to still say no, I think that puts the city, our families and providers in a very difficult position for the next several weeks, and frankly, does not move the ball substantially forward. So my request of the board is you're tonight, you're, you're voting tonight to move forward with a commitment from the administration to bring back and share with you MOU, take feedback if there are concerning things, of course, to address them, but I represent to you my commitment to ensure that everything that we've included in that presentation this evening would be reflected in that MOU with some additional matters that were discussed this evening. And so I would ask that this vote tonight have a little bit more force than was just sort of being debated, if, if that makes sense.
And Ms. Page, would you mind repeating your motion, please? Because I believe I didn't state it exactly as you stated it. So would you be so kind to repeat that? Because I think you answered Mr. Barlow's question, and then we have others to discuss as well. Ms. Page? Is she there?
Yes. So the motion is to receive the recommendation from the administration regarding the proposal from the city with stipulation to review the contents of the MOU with regular updates. Did I capture everything or the concerns?
And Mr. Young did second that.
Yes.
So we have others to discuss, chat, Mrs. Dorr, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Dorr?
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay. Yeah, I don't know if we need to workshop that any further, but yeah, I'm happy to help.
Mr. Barlow?
I think that was from my earlier one, but I do think that, that Mrs. Page's motion reflects what we just discussed, so.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, we're ready to vote?
Madam Chair, just for clarity, from, for the motion, Ms. Page, are you asking to receive the recommendation or to approve the recommendation?
Receive the recommendation.
Approve.
Approve. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
To approve, so the motion made by Mrs. Page is to approve the recommendation from the administration regarding the proposal from the city with, with the stipulation to review the contents of the MOU with regular updates. Just one more question for clarity, do you want to put in here proposal from the city regarding, is it emergency childcare or virtual learning, support of virtual learning?
Support of virtual learning.
Thank you. So I'm going to read the motion one more time, to approve the recommendation from the administration regarding the proposal from the city regarding support of virtual learning with the stipulation to review the contents of an MOU, of the MOU with regular updates. The motion was made by Ms. Page, and it was seconded by Mr. Young. Correct?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Stane.
Ms. Gibson?
Stane.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. All right, we are at the end of our meeting. If there's no further business or announcements in the meeting...
Ms. Burke?
Yes, Ms. Page?
I apologize, I do have an announcement. I just would like to encourage all of my families in the eighth district to participate in a listening session this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. We all, we, we all informed regarding the virtual opening. So again, just want to encourage the eighth district families to participate in the listening session on Thursday, September 3rd at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and also, I'd like to thank the administration and our board persons that participated with the ultimate backpack, Ms. Page, Chairman Omenon, Dr. Harris' team was excellent, of course, our superintendent, thank you so very, very much. We collected over 21,000 PPE kits and also supplies. So the goal was 15,000, and we did 21,000. So I thank you all for donating and encouraging, the outpour was awesome, the partnership was phenomenal, and we're going to make sure that every child receives a PPE kit. So VCU alum, way to go, thank you. Thank you so much, the meeting is now adjourned.